You got all your signatures.
I'm busy with all life.
Ready? Good evening. I'm going to go ahead and call to order. I'm not going to call to order yet. I'm going to close the executive session. No action was taken. And now I'm going to call to order this regular city council meeting for December 9, 2025. Please join me in a prayer and a pledge of allegiance. Lord, thank you for the many things you bless us with. Thank you for this town where we live. Thank you for the beauty of this place. Thank you for the kindness and generosity of the people who live here. Thank you for our first responders, those who watch out and protect us every day. Thank you for our military serving around the world and at home, protecting us every day. Lord, it's Christmas time. Be with those who struggle during the holidays. Bless them with comfort and peace. Thank you for all that you've done for us. In your holy name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any announcements of community interest? Ma'am?
Great. Okay, as you guys, can everyone hear me? Can you hear me? I don't have any idea how to turn the mic off. It's not this.
It's on. Closer.
Apologies. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, great. So, hi, City Council, Mayor Herring. After a whirlwind onboarding, I couldn't ask for better partners in our city staff, Chief McCall, Kelly Hagmeyer, and all the leaders, and of course, Martin Greenwell, who is sitting behind the scenes, of course, as he always does, but is so critical to this community's success. I just have to give him a great shout out because he has been really great for my onboarding, and I am so excited to be here. Just really quickly, I know we're going to look at community events coming ahead, but looking back, I wanted to share a few recent highlights. We have the Holiday Parade and Running Home for the Holidays 5K, Christmas Cookies with the Cops, and on our next slide, we just have a few event recaps to share with you. Am I supposed to do it? Okay. So, we have our 2025 Holiday Lighted Parade winners, J.M. Masonry, Tyvee Antler Band, Tyvee Antler Athletics, and our nonprofit volunteer services, Kerrville State Hospital. So, we just wanted to make sure everyone got to see those winners one last time before the Holiday Lighted Parade is in the rearview mirror again. But really quickly again, we also wanted to share some event highlights with you all on the next slide. Okay. Oops. There we go. It was a great event. There were over 100 registered floats, and we estimated about 6,000 people downtown. There were over 10 earned media hits for us, and our Facebook post of the winners received 84,000 views, which was our fourth top post for the entire year, which is just outstanding. We also had two major event sponsors, James Avery and HEB, and we wanted to also recognize Kerr County Lead for their live broadcasting of the event. It could not have been put on without the success of our incredible team, Kerrville Parks and Rec, police, fire, public works, IT, and all the rest. So, a big shout out to all of our city employees there for running with the, running Home for the Holidays 5K. There was a lot of creative wear, I am told, but you couldn't have asked for a more beautiful day. There were over 350 people involved in that day, and then on the same day, we also had Christmas Cookies with the Cops over at Arcadia with sponsors Hill Country, MHD Center, and PAX Downtown with 140 very sugar happy, very sugar crazed kids. So, very excited to celebrate all those events. And then just a couple of items not on our slides, but wanted to give a quick shout out to. We had our annual employee breakfast, where we recognized many employees, some reaching 10, 15, but even 25 and 30 years of service, celebrating the amazing loyalty of our greatest ambassadors, our employees. There was also a Santa sighting yesterday, December 8, yesterday at our Butt-Holtsworth Memorial Library, where there were over 100 participants, and we will be reporting that soon on Facebook. Today, earlier today, was the Senior Dance at the Deirdre Center, thanks to our sponsors HEB, Deirdre Center, and the city. Now, moving ahead, just wanted to reiterate some important changes. As you all know, we have our new public safety facility, and the police department and our municipal court have officially moved in. We will do a house, open house, community event sometime early, you know, early to mid-January, once they've unpacked all the boxes and Chief McCall stopped playing with the auditory system, and we will have a great time for all to attend. And then, moving on, we have community news. Just wanted to reiterate a couple of really important things going on around downtown. We had our lottery for the banner signup, which, and there are still some banners available. So, if you would like information about that, that's available on our website or by calling us directly. And then with Kelly, she is really focused on the exterior enhancement grant program, and I'm going to get that wrong, the T-I-R-Z zone.
Terz.
Terz. Terz, number one. They are, there's $50,000 set aside for that grant enhancement program, and we want to make sure that all businesses in that zone have a chance to apply if they would like to do so. Additionally, our Parks team is always working hard. Right now, they are assessing community requests, and we'll be releasing a survey soon on priorities for our Guadalupe Park. And lastly, we have just a few different events that are coming up. Glow Hike, Blue Santa is taking place along with Letters for Santa at the library, ages four and up. A deadline for all of you soccer fans out there, if you want to sign up for our adult winter soccer league, that is December 19. And then we have a trout restocking event happening at Louis Hayes Park before we have some city closure days before the holidays. And I believe that we have one more community interest announcement to make. Chief McCall?
Mayor and Council, just wanted to pass along some recognition that we received last month at the Impact Awards in San Antonio, sponsored by the San Antonio Business Journal and San Antonio Area Foundation. They presented a certificate of appreciation to the first responders of the city of Kerrville in recognition of bravery, dedication, and selfless service during the July 4, 2025 floods. And we thought the important reason to present this here is because on July 4, our entire organization were first responders. Normally, you think of police cars and fire trucks showing up as first responders. That day, they showed up in pickup trucks from utilities, pickup trucks from Parks and Rec, all of our support staff that responded to help support all of the operations that day. So, really, it was an award for our entire city organization. We were proud to, myself, Chief Maloney, several representatives of Parks and Rec, as well as utilities and public works, were able to go and receive the award. We were proud to do that on behalf of the city of Kerrville, and wanted to thank all of you and all of the city organization for all their support on that day, and pass along that recognition that they all earned.
You want to hear our announcement?
I must steal a little thunder because I see some of the ladies here, but, and also Mr. Junker with River Hill. Sunday, is there still room, John, or do you know? So, Sunday at 11 o'clock is a registration, and then there's a golf tournament that benefits Blue Santa. Mr. Junker started this last year with River Hill giving all the proceeds back to Blue Santa. Last year was put together in three weeks, and I think we started a little bit earlier this year so we can have a bigger turnout. So, if y'all are interested, please reach out to River Hill or the Kerrville Citizens Police Alumni Association.
Academy Alumni Association.
So, or Rose Bradshaw, it's so fast printing, I'm going to throw her out there, and we can get you the information, so. But it's a great cause for the kiddos that are a little bit less fortunate.
Yes, Kerrville Pets Alive will be hosting an adoption event this coming Saturday between 11:00 and 2:30 at our Safe House Campus at 2102 Memorial Boulevard. The dogs are from Kerr County Animal Services, and their lives are at risk. Please consider adopting a dog rescued locally and saving a life over the Christmas holidays. KPA is going to be sponsoring the adoption fees, the spay neuter surgery, the vaccines, and the microchip, so you can, and you can see those adoptable dogs on their Facebook page, so please consider saving a life.
Yes. All right, we'll move on to presentations. Julie, do you want to start this one?
I would love to. So, good evening, Mayor and Council and guests. I'm honored today to recognize some people who have been basically our right hand for the last several months, and before we move into the next step, I thought it might be important to bring them here and recognize them. If we all, Matthew and Angel and Ira, can you come up, please? So, these guys, Matthew Perrell, Ira Guzman, and Angel Carverhal, they have been extremely, I would say, above and beyond helpful as we've navigated some super difficult times in the last several months. And so, they're available, I can honestly say, on a Saturday morning if I'm working on something. I'm affectionately going to say in the evening in pajamas if I have to call Ira for something. But here, every week, in person, holding our hand through this, looking at procurement. Angel was face to face with me on the evening of July 5 and saying, hey, we need to work through these forums today. We have to get this stuff out, and how, met with our leadership team and really navigated, basically just making sure we didn't drop the ball in the beginning and all the way through. So, I want to really thank them for what they've done. I know it's their job, but I can't tell you the above and beyond efforts that they have made through this process.
I'm going to read just a little bit of it. Recognition for support. Each has been, has delivered outstanding support to the city related to the administration of the FEMA Public Assistance Program following the July 4, 2025 flood disaster. And above and beyond, that's what everyone I've talked to says. All right. Matthew? Let's get it pulled up so we get a picture. Thanks, Julie. Thank you very much. Thank you for helping. Would you like to say anything? Any words?
Well, first of all, I want to say thank you to the city of Kerrville for this recognition, Julie. Thank you, it means a lot. I came here from Arizona, where it's my home, to assist Texas in regards to the Fourth of July flooding event, and I couldn't do the recovery without everybody in the city along the side of T-DOM to make sure that we're doing the best we can to help your community recover. I understand that it's been very hard. I mean, we were boots on the ground immediately, and just seeing the impact and just how quickly everyone gathered together to just work as a team has been wonderful. So, it is a privilege and an honor to be in Texas, especially being assigned to the city of Kerrville, and to keep moving forward. So, again, thank you, everyone, and this means a lot, so I appreciate you. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll just say a quick, something real fast. Without Ira, kind of working towards with FEMA as well, you know, with T-DOM, kind of hand in hand, we've been stuck to the hip for the last five months or so, but this is not an individual awards team. I know T-DOM were a big organization, you know, we've kind of come together to help the city, not only the city, but the county as well, to kind of make sure that, you know, citizens in the local community of Kerrville can kind of get back to that new norm and, you know, be in that beautiful place that, you know, everybody loves here in the hill country. But that's it, I really appreciate it. Do you want to say something?
Yeah, I mean, we appreciate the recognition. I appreciate the recognition. Thank you. Ira said it billion times, we can say it a billion more times. Thank you. Really appreciate and want to recognize Julie and her staff for all they did, right? We're the, we might be the ones answering the call, but she's the one calling, she's asking those important questions. She's doing the hard work for the city itself. And so, thank you to Julie, the team, Mayor, Council, and everyone here.
Next will be the state, federal, county, and contract department.
Yes. Thank you. I need the help.
Yes.
Mr. Hornis.
Mayor, I'd like to just spend a moment and follow up on what Julie did and recognize a separate side of what we've been dealing with and have the folks who helped out with the debris cleanup, if y'all would stand up and meet the judge up front.
Judge isn't here right now.
Oh, the mayor. See? Every meeting's your first meeting. We're not going to have everybody represented, because I just checked my last meeting, and we've had these every day seemingly for months, and now they're a little less, but there's 67 people on that, on that call, and every single one of them has a, has a role to play. And so, from T-DOM's side, it's impossible to name all the people, but Sherri LaCour, Judy Lucio, Zach Hood, the chiefs over there that have been instrumental in this, and then our own local folks, Shori Harmon and some of the other guys up here, John McNeese and Joseph Gennarella, those are the folks from Debris Tech. Those were the people who were doing a lot of the calling to the homeowners and getting access to both Seres and Ashbrit.
Debris Tech?
Debris Tech, they're not here. They're not here tonight, so he was, he said, you want me to fly in from Mississippi? And I said, please do not do that. So, from Seres, though, Jay Zalinski is here, right in the middle, and Seres was our main contractor within the city limits. So, this was all separated out between Thompson Bridge, and Ashbrit went west towards Hunt and back towards Thompson Bridge, and Seres went from Thompson Bridge down towards Comfort in that direction. But for our sake, Ashbrit also was helping us out because they helped remediate the soccer fields. So, they're working through that process as a contract under T-DOM to get that back to the condition it was in previously. We got these guys here. So, gosh, Bo Ainsley and Jay Zalinski from Seres helped us out so much, Jamie Robbins and Francisco Garcia, who are here from Ashbrit. And then you can, if you got one for T-DOM, you can hand that over to... And then you can, if you got one for T-DOM, you can hand that over to, there it is.
And I have one for FEMA, actually.
And FEMA, I didn't think anybody was going to show up today.
I have a lady for FEMA, come on up.
But we have, finance can do it, you can come on up for them. That's been an interesting process because we tried every which way to figure out, like, is this a category A, is this a category B? What is a category A? What is a category B? We all learned a whole bunch of new language and FEMA folks were very helpful in that, so. And we love you for understanding it. Thank you. And so with that, Mayor, I just wanted to offer our congratulations from the, from the staff, from the city, and from the community, and we appreciate y'all.
We want y'all to know that we appreciate you. And the certificate of recognition says, "The city of Kerrville extends its heartfelt gratitude to the dedicated members of the Debris Task Force who responded the aftermath of the devastating July 4th floods. Thank you for being here. I feel like we called for help and the world showed up. So thank you very much for all you've done." And does anybody want to have us say a few words?
No, thank, I mean, it's been an honor to be here. I'm from southeast Texas, so I was here on July 5th. This is my 22nd year in debris business. This, every mission is different. This one to us was not a debris mission, this was a sensitive recovery mission. I think we personally planted 50 new cypress trees along the water, so we made this place our home and you made us feel like we were home the whole time. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
I just want to say what a pleasure it's been here, serving, you know, the city, the county, the people here. Been here almost five months now and I love this area. I would probably relocate here. It's the class of people that you have here, the community itself, it's truly an amazing place, so thank you. It's been my pleasure, so.
Thank you.
I'll just echo what Matthew and Angel said, it's been a pleasure working with the city of Kerrville. Obviously with debris, there's a lot of moving parts and Michael with all the meetings, I, you know, we're toning it down a little bit now, but yeah, just a lot of coordination, so I just appreciate everyone. I'm here on behalf of the Debris Task Force, which is made up of 10 recovery coordinators and specialists back at headquarters, and they've done an incredible job of pushing through communication and making sure that we're all on the same page, so this is, this is for them.
Sir, I actually, you know, I certainly appreciate getting to know everybody during this whole incident and I've learned a lot from this and it's been an absolute pleasure to work beside you, Mayor, and everybody in the council, as well as the rest of the community. As a local here, I'm your local county liaison officer, I certainly appreciate the recognition and I look forward to continuing to work with you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Actually, we do have a FEMA debris team that is working alongside of T-DOM and all of the supports that have been out here. Thank you guys on behalf of FEMA and it's not, has not been easy. It's been a very interesting way that T-DOM has handled the debris removal of this event and so I've heard nothing but wonderful things. And as, as you know, I am actually Program Delivery Manager for Kerrville and Kerr County and so I've been working alongside and monitoring everything and I'll make sure that the debris team from FEMA gets this recognition and that they know that all their hard work hasn't gone unnoticed. And again, we couldn't do this without T-DOM and all the wonderful contractors that have been supporting the cleanup and getting you guys back pre-disaster the best we can, so.
Want to get the photo already? All right, hold up the, hold up the certificates. Hold on. Here we go. Thank you. Thanks again. Thank you for.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Christmas poem. Every year, the city sponsors a Christmas poem contest and we have three that stood out, written by Pauline Rogers, Randy Weber, and Valerie R. And are you, anybody here? Come on up, please. Come on up, please. What would, what would I like to do, if it's okay with you two, is read a little bit of the proclamation and invite you to read your poem to us. Is that okay? Right. Whereas the fifth citywide poem search for a poet who could capture the essence and awe of the Christmas in Kerrville began on the 18th of November, 2025. And whereas the citizens of Kerrville came together and shared their written memories, thoughts, visions, and stories into beautifully written poems celebrating a Christmas in Kerrville. And whereas of the 10 submitted poems, three poems were selected for best capturing and describing what a Christmas in Kerrville is all about. And so with sincere gratitude, we extend to Pauline Rogers, Randy Weber, and Valerie R. for giving their incredible talent to the citizens of Kerrville by capturing the true joy and spirit of Christmas in Kerrville for this and future generations to enjoy. Thank you very much, ladies. All right. Are you going to read the third poem?
I, yes, for Valerie.
Good, thank you. Who wants to start? Would you like to start?
Oh, I don't care.
Here's a microphone, come up and read it, read your first poem. Thank you, and, and make sure to say, tell your name.
My name is Pauline Rogers and I live in Kerrville and I just want to thank everyone for inviting me here because it's been a joy writing this poem. And I'm originally from Massachusetts, a little town by the name of Sandwich, and it was named at the Sandwich England in 1637 we were incorporated.
Wow.
And so, and I'm married to Texans, so what else can I say? So this is the poem I wrote. "Christmas in Kerrville. Kerrville is the name of our beautiful town and we're hoping your destination will be to the lovely hill country of Texas. You'll love it here, you'll see. To walk our Guadalupe River with the trees all turning gold, you'll be making beautiful memories that someday will be told. Christmas is a special time for all of us to see the lighting of the courthouse and the beautiful Christmas tree, the reflection of light from the island in the park as breathtaking as can be. And to celebrate our Lord's birth brings joy and happiness to me. So come visit our little town of Kerrville, you're as welcome as can be and celebrate God's gift to us with our Kerrville family."
Your name?
I'm Randy Weber. "O spirit of nativity descending soft and deep, we bow our hearts this Christmas, our promises to keep. We pray for every neighbor whose tired hands pitched in, who showed us how to fiercely love when chaos rushed within. Blessed the selfless helpers, pillars strong and true, whose labor forged a bond of grace that carried Kerrville through. May warmth rest on the shoulders that helped the heaviest lift, the heroes who defined for us the true and lasting gift. Bless every life that stayed on through that summer fright, and boots soaked through with sorrow yet still found strength to fight. May hands that offered casseroles and cleared each broken pain be filled this Christmas sevenfold with comfort after pain. We thank you for resilience built of stubborn wild grace and unyielding spirit shining so brightly from this place. May courage they revealed in us become their sure defense, the certainty of goodness the heart's true permanence. Let their legacy be hope that holds through every tide, the Christmas truth made human where divinity resides."
One of our participants can be here tonight, so if they have a guest reader.
Guest reader on behalf of Valerie R. "Christmas in Kerrville, time is here, round up all the Christmas cheer. It's time for those who really know that this is Christmas in Kerrville year. Sleigh bells everywhere, mistletoe we share. Don't you know that lights aglow, Kerrville presents are so fair. Children and Christmas Kerrville light, the glorious of Christmas sight, so we see that this could be its beautiful at Christmas Kerrville's night. We know what all we see, smiles are presently, stockings for me and for you, presents are there for us too. Kerrville's tree, lights burn till free. Kerrville and, Christmas in Kerrville time is here. Round up all the Christmas cheer. It's time for those who really know that this is Christmas in Kerrville year."
I'll make sure that she gets this. Let's get a picture. Get a picture. That was lovely.
Thank you so much. Perfect. Thank you.
That was lovely.
That was.
Sisters?
Yes, sir.
And correct. All right, if you're with, if you're a graduate of the Citizen Academy, would y'all please come up front? I can tell by your blue shirt you're part of the.
Because I'm one too, actually.
They didn't do a very good background check on this one.
How many in the audience know what the Citizen Academy is? Nope.
I just forgot the Citizen.
Have been through it. The Citizen Academy tries to take people who want to know more about how the city works through all the departments and it's led by Charvy, who's right here. You have a few words for us?
Uh, yes, sorry. Can you see me? Can you hear me? So before you, it's the fourth class for Citizens Government Academy. So Citizens Government Academy is a, for this session, it was a 10-week program. So it gives citizens a behind-the-scenes look at how the city operates. It gives citizens a chance to learn, ask questions, and really connect with the teams that really keep the city running, so. And we have a great group in front of you.
And Charvy does a great job, doesn't she?
She does.
All right, let me hand these out. Rose, I love, I love Rose. Who is Cindy? Cindy Breen here today? Brian Burke. Tell him you called her.
Right here.
Lisa Burke with some Caciola?
Of course, thank you.
Mark Cowan?
Right here.
Or is it Cowan?
Cowan.
Laura Davis? Pamela?
She's not here.
Linda Kaiser?
I'm here.
Thank you. It says Ramona, but I know you.
That's okay.
Frank? All right, Marsha? And Lloyd? Good. All right. Listen, what I'd like you to do is state your name and tell us something you got out of the, out of the program.
Linda Kaiser. I'm actually in the county, not the city, but I've learned so much from this and I'm so impressed with the city of Kerrville, their organization, their intelligence, and just the way they run the city and the caring that they have for the citizens.
Mark Cowan. I think I'm just impressed with the sophistication of all the systems in the city. I would have never expected it.
Tony Caldwell. I really didn't want to do this class and these ladies here said you're going to do it. And I have never been more thrilled to attend. I didn't want to miss a thing. I learned so much. And whoever says that old people don't learn anything, I've got a new one for you. If I was a little younger, I can see so many different career paths I would love to jump in and do. The city is absolutely amazing. Everything from the financing and the budget and how they plan to their IT group to GIS, and I have a grandson graduating next week with GIS from A&amp;M. So I learned so much about how everything is done in this community and it was absolutely phenomenal. And I encourage anyone in the whole city and even the county people to come and see it. It answers so many questions. It opens your eyes and thank you.
So I'm Lisa Caciola and my husband Jerry had gone through the Citizens Government Academy a few classes ago and I remember every time he came home after one of the class meetings, he was just more and more, I mean, so enthusiastic. I said, well, I'm going to do this too. And now I get it. It, you know, to echo what everyone else has said, just, guys, Kerrville, we're in good hands with the leadership of Kerrville. You've got very highly intelligent and caring people and what a great combination, but I would strongly suggest anyone who's the least bit interested in what goes on in your city, go for this. It really has been informative and just, yeah, your leaders are just wonderful, really are.
I'm Laura Davis and I think taking the class, I just, I learned a lot about how everything worked and I'm just looking forward to our future because they've got everything mapped out and I just hope I live another 30 years and can see all this stuff happen, so. And if you don't take this class, take the Citizens Police Academy class. That's a good one too. Then you'll find out how these guys got our back. It's very informative also, but thank for everything that y'all do. I'm looking forward to our future.
Rose Bradshaw. Actually, I was trying to take this one, the very first one. My husband took it then. Finally got it, made it, Charvy, bless me. I can attest that the workings between the city and every department that they have is phenomenal. They, they work very well together and have a, a great coordination and I was just very, very impressed on, on that fact besides what she said, when my husband would come home, he'd just be chattering on everything he learned, so. And coach.
Mona LaBleu. I too only live in the county, shouldn't say only. I do live in the county and not the city, but I've worked here in this city for 20 years now. I mean, just meeting the people who are actually making everything happen feels amazing, great people, great attitudes, great characters. Even our fellow students up here of the academy have just really made me feel like the city's in really good hands.
Hi, my name's Glenn Rowan. I have, have just gotten such an insight into how all this works and, you know, likewise my colleagues have said, y'all really need to take some time on this next class and hop in here and just see how transparent the city and the workers are and actually just see how honest, how honestly everything works. So I recommend it.
I'm Marcia Soraya. I've learned so much in this class. We've met a lot of people. We've learned how things run and how everybody, that all our leadership here in this community really care about the community.
I'm Frank Soraya. I have a much better understanding of how and why city government works.
Lloyd Wright, born and raised in Kerrville, away for 45 years and it's a good way to get reintroduced to the city, really enjoyed it.
My name is Brian Burke. I'm Kerrville and I can only echo what each one has already said, that we feel at the end of our sessions, we're definitely in good hands with all of our department leaders and all of the staff within the Kerrville area. Thank you so much.
Let's hold up your certificates and let's get a picture. There's a single picture to be tagged.
So I was actually thinking, could we
leaders and all of the, uh, the staff within the, the Curville area. Thank you so much.
Let's hold up your certificates and let's get a picture. There's a single picture to be tagged.
So I was actually thinking, could we cut maybe this way in half and go up there? And that way we could get everybody.
They're so wide.
Oh, sure. Go up there, that's great.
Yeah, can we get your view here?
If you go up there, you have to stay up there.
And then the rest center in here, and then we can get everybody. Colleagues for the... See, how's the people, you can stay? Is that, is that okay?
You can be the real thing if you want. I can show you and tell you how to peel those shutters.
Charvy, we want you in the picture.
Come on, Charvy.
Can that kind of work? Yes. But I need her there.
Yeah, I don't.
You right there, you right there. There we go. Every other.
Got two down there, I'll ask.
Charvy, I think you need to come over here.
Charvy, you're too tall.
I'm sorry. I'm too tall, right? You too, yeah, too tall. Thank you, guys. All right, everybody. Thank y'all so much for working with us. There we go. Everybody get it?
Chase, chase, chase.
I'm missing, can you move to your left just a little? Yeah, okay. Everybody's face. Would you notice if we did?
Okay.
Thank you, guys. Let's see if I have one over here for you. What's your question?
No, we did a little practice run last week. It's a tough job. Learned a lot.
We solved the problem.
All right.
That was it.
That's it.
Well, not, not them. Julie, before you start, I want to say something real quick. Uh, y'all were up here a while ago being recognized by the city. And y'all were thanking us. I think when you say thank you to y'all, again, for what y'all have done and been here for the last five months to help our community, you don't need to thank us. We need to be thanking y'all again. So thank y'all once again for being here. So it's, I just had to recognize you. Out of order, but.
No, it's fine.
Last meeting.
All right. I think our next item is 2E, financial update. Julie?
I didn't bring a poem to, so I hope this is not terribly boring, but, um, there we go. Okay. So it's too late to, I mean, too early to report on anything for '26, so I just wanted to kind of bring you back an overview of '25. Um, remember, we're not audited completely yet, um, but we don't think there will be any more material changes compared to what Trina reported to you last time. Um, so look at the general fund first, and, um, you'll see the miss in revenue, obviously. And we've talked about this a lot, mostly recreation revenue, as we had to, you know, close the parks for a while and some things that we would ordinarily be doing, we weren't able to do. Um, but overall, better than budget and expenses. And keep in mind, we did slow some things down, um, the latter part of the year as we were working on flood response. So what interests you the most is probably a positive change in net position. So we feel pretty good about having, you know, a little over $500,000 left after everything that we've incurred. Now, of course, we're not even close, um, to being finished, but given our, our emergency protective measures are in this line item, um, that's a good way to end the year. This is just the, uh, charts showing you by category. We did go back and, and look at this, and I couldn't fit it on one page, but they do align very closely with the way we budgeted, especially on revenues. And year over year, those kind of align the same way. So, you know, as we talk about building trends and things like that, so that we can better project revenues for the future, um, we like to see it by percentage so that we can see that everything is lining out and we're, uh, building a forecast that makes sense moving forward. On the water fund side, um, we were better than budget on revenues, um, but primarily, again, we had a pretty heavy interest year. Um, we had a miss on water sales, you'll see that, um, but we had some pretty severe restrictions there for the past few months. But given that we were in stage three most of the year, I would say that our adjustment to our water model, uh, with less dependency on, on irrigation is working, considering last year at this time, we were a million dollars, um, short from that revenue. So, um, so that was good. Overall, um, $380,000 better, um, in change in net position at the end of the year. So we'll be making some decisions on whether to roll that into fund balance or move that elsewhere as we move forward in the next month. And I didn't mention on the general fund side, in January, we will be bringing you a budget amendment for FY '26. We have received the updated rolls from CERCAD, so we'll be making those property tax adjustments, uh, based on the updated rolls. So I should have mentioned that on the general fund side, and I didn't. This is just kind of illustrating what I was saying about, um, the updated water models. You can see, um, fiscal year '24, the orange there is that million-dollar miss, um, in budget. And then in '25, a little bit of a miss, um, but we were again in water restrictions for the entire fiscal year. So, um, we're feeling pretty good that we are continuing to be less dependent on irrigation, and so we'll keep working on that going forward so we can make sure that we're aligning with budget properly. Um, development services, I did keep this one separate. I know we talk about this one a lot, and it's super volatile, just depending on what's going on, um, economically in the community and those things. Their expenses are very, um, constant for the most part. Um, this year, we had, uh, $63,000, uh, positive change in net position compared to $300,000 miss last year. So I wanted to illustrate that just because you just don't know from one year to the next. This is one that we do the best we can to budget, but heavily reliant on permits, um, for new development and those kind of things. So, um, we do have in the '26 budget, a new code enforcement officer that will be focusing on animal control and some other code issues. So I know they're in the process of trying to, uh, recruit that person right now. This is just illustrating the other funds. This is as you see it in your budget book, and we won't go through all these funds, but I wanted to show it as we've kind of wrapped up the year so that you can see, um, how we ended, revenues and expenditures, and then any net, uh, change at the end of the year. So I pointed out the significant ones, and you'll see Library Memorial, um, we're completing the HHHC project, so that's been multi-year. So we fully expected to see, um, that use of fund balance for that. And then you'll see the same thing in the hot fund because we had to transfer over to that project out of there as well. So everything else, um, really aligned. Um, the other thing to point out is you'll see the general facility fund and the water system facility fund and the positive change in net position there to the tune of about a million dollars in the general fund. These have been, uh, the funds that we created in '20, into '24, uh, to really focus on future sustainability. So the money that we're tucking away through the budget process and putting over there and saving for a larger expenditures later that we might need to make.
Julie, can I ask you a quick question?
Yes.
I was gonna send, uh, dawned on email to ask you this anyway, but now that you have it up. Where would I locate in the budget, uh, where we've given, uh, our nonprofits grants like Arcadia Live and Doyle and?
So either in hot or, uh, primarily in the hot fund if you're looking for event-driven type things.
Okay.
They'd be in the hot fund. And if you need detail on that, uh, let me know if it's not in the budget book. The other one is insurance reserve, um, that $5 million, uh, change net. I guess I think we all know that is our, uh, primarily our policy payout for the flood. And so we just haven't expended all those floods. They will likely be transferred over to CIP or where our flood expenses are landing. So I know Trina went over this with you last time, so I won't go through the whole thing again, but I think it's important for the public to kind of know how money flows when we're talking about public assistance and reimbursement, especially with the amount of dollars that we're spending right now and the amount of dollars we're gonna be spending in the future. So right now, we're still, uh, working through, um, review committee with FEMA. So most of our projects have already been pushed over there and are in the review process. Um, so as those get, um, obligated by FEMA, then TIDAM will receive those funds, and then we'll start the grant submission, uh, to start receiving eligible reimbursement. So we don't plan on this being a quick process. Um, it's very thorough. Um, but again, we have a good team supporting us through that, and so, um, we'll be getting, getting, moving on those submissions as soon as we can. Um, quick update on the floods. So emergency protective measures, um, our full, um, pending award right now, $951,000. I think we talked about last time, we expect about $713,000, assuming that all those expenses are approved. Uh, but we have been compiling our donated resources, including volunteer hours, equipment, donated meals, all those kind of things. And any of those things will be offsetting, um, some of that. So we're hopeful that it will make up that couple hundred thousand dollars difference there and maybe, um, maybe reduce or eliminate our out-of-pocket for, for that project. So, um, Bear Creek Bridge, that, uh, repair is completed. That $446,000 that we just spent, um, or about to spend, we haven't actually paid that bill yet, but we will be paying it probably within the next couple of weeks. That will anticipate 75% reimbursement on that as well. And then we're happy to say we have been funded, um, for our flood pain management and our $10,000 reimbursement down there. And that was for some inspections that Drew and his team, um, had a consultant come in and do to make sure that we were compliant with FEMA. So other projects that are submitted, you're gonna start seeing some numbers over the next few months as we start rolling into what things are actually gonna cost us. Keep in mind, these are still heavily estimated. Um, River Trail repairs, that's something that Parks, um, has really been working hard to get that back open and running. Um, we're estimating about $2 million expense there. Louis Hayes Park, you heard from Jay, um, at the last workshop, and that's gonna be a huge redesign kind of project, given where everything was located. So we don't really know. Uh, Shriners Park estimated at 1.5. Um, we've just recreated contracts for the G Street guardrail, so that is out. And then a lot of things still happen at Water Treatment Plant. But a lot of things are happening and work is being done, even though we don't really have everything tied up with a bow yet. But as we progress, each month, I'll be updating those numbers for you. And then, of course, you heard the good news that Guadalupe Park has been fully funded, um, by outside sources. So, um, we closed that FEMA project, and so that will be moving forward, um, very quickly, I would think. So any questions on any, um, financial-related matters?
Questions?
Yeah. Okay. Um, updated calendar, again, just to keep you all, um, adrift of what's going on. We'll be submitting our budget award here in the next few weeks, um, hopefully, uh, before Christmas is our hope. Um, working on audits, so we've been, had a pretty heavy week this week, um, getting that done, and then continuing to work on flood, and then we'll be hopping into budget, um, really soon.
Thank you.
Yep, thank y'all.
I, I prefer these, uh, presentations early in the evening.
Is there anyone in the audience that has questions?
While we're still awake and everything.
Yeah. We, yeah, just be glad we don't get awake. We don't have a thousand questions, but we'll thank y'all.
Thank you.
I don't have to be last, so that's good.
All right. Anybody sign up to speak?
Yes, sir.
Next item is the consent agenda. No discussion is anticipated on these items, and they're considered routine. They can be pulled from the consent agenda by a member of the council, by staff or a member of the audience. We have one ordinance, I think one ordinance, that needs to be read before, two ordinances need to be read before we vote, but does anyone have an item they would like to remove from the consent agenda? Mm-mm. Good. All right, would you mind reading those ordinances in?
Yes, sir. Ordinance number 2025-22, second reading, an ordinance deleting Article II, sidewalk cafes, Chapter 30 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Curville, Texas, and moving these provisions to Chapter 90, streets, sidewalks, and other public places of said code. Creating a new Division Two of Article Two within Chapter 90, said division titled Sidewalk Amnities in the Downtown Core, which comprises regulations regarding the use and encroachment of amnities onto sidewalks within the city's downtown core, providing for a penalty for violation of any provision hereof, providing for an effective date, and providing other matters related to the subject. This ordinance was unanimously approved on first reading November 18th, 2025. Item 4B, ordinance number 2025-25, second reading, an ordinance dissolving the city's Senior Services Advisory Committee by deleting Section 2-91 Senior Services Advisory Committee of Chapter 2 Administration, Article 4 Boards and Commissions of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Curville, Texas, and repealing the ordinances which created and amended the committee. This ordinance was unanimously approved on first reading November 18th, 2025.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there a motion then on the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve items for A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, and I of the consent agenda.
A second? Motion's been made and seconded. Rediscussion, all in favor, so vote. It passes unanimously. Thank you. Item five.
Mr. Marab, once again, this last meeting, I need to recuse myself from this vote as it could be a potential business conflict of interest.
All right, thank you, sir. As he's leaving, would you mind reading in the ordinance for us?
Yes, sir. Ordinance number 2025-26, second reading, an ordinance disannexing from the city limits land being approximately 79.4 acres, addressed as 1200 Shepherd Reese Road, out of the Horace Yeeman's Survey Number 575, abstract number 378, the Horace Yeeman's Survey Number 576, abstract 377, and the Mima Wilson's Survey Number 1471, abstract number 814. The land generally located adjacent to and between Thompson Drive, Spur 98, and Shepherd Reese Road, amending the boundaries of the city to exclude the land, directing the city to notify the Texas Comptroller of the change in boundaries, authorizing a refund of taxes and fees upon disannexation as required by law, and providing for findings of fact, repealer, severability, effective date, property notice, and providing other matters related to the subject. This ordinance was unanimously approved 4 to O on first reading November 18th, 2025.
Thank you, ma'am. Does he want signed up to speak on this one?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Paxton, do you have anything to add? We have a question for any member of staff. If not, there's, is there a motion then on item 4B? I'm sorry, four? Where are we?
5A.
5A, I got lost for a second. 5A.
I would move that we approve ordinance number 5A, uh, under 5A, ordinance number 2025-26.
There's a second reading.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor, so vote. Passes 4 to 0. Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome back. Item 6A, with whom shall we start? Ms. Seeger?
I think she started it off great last time.
Ms. Hagemeier?
Hello, council. Thank you again, um, for allowing me to talk about this exciting designation that the city of Curville has received from the Texas Commission of the Arts for Cultural District. Back in 2005, um, the Texas Legislature, they voted in to, um, allow Texas Commission of the Arts to, um, have cultural designations which stimulate economic development, community vitality, uh, with focal points of generating business, attracting tourists, stimulating cultural development, and fostering civic pride. There are currently 57 designations in Texas, and Curville is now one of those. How this process began, um, the, uh, Main Street Advisory Board had seen this as, um, a potential for our downtown area, uh, to help emphasize all of the arts that we have. In November, council approved for, um, the, for Main Street to submit an application. That, uh, application was approved by TCA in September. And then we come to you today with a resolution for creating the Cultural Arts District Advisory Board and their bylaws. The Cultural Arts District is the downtown core, which is, um, laid out in the 2050 comprehensive plan. The goals of, uh, the Cultural District, uh, attracting artists, encouraging business, addressing any needs that the community sees, um, any hurdles that we might have for the arts community, establishing, uh, this area as a tourist destination, preserving and reusing historic, uh, buildings, enhancing property values, values, and fostering local cultural development. So the city of Curville is now the managing entity for the Cultural District and is the primary liaison between the district and the Texas Culture, uh, Commission of Arts. Our responsibility is to submit projects for grant applications, submit an annual report. We will need to recertify every 10 years, and we also would cha, uh, submit any changes needed at any time to the district. There are three major grant opportunities. There's Arts Respond, which is more geared towards programming. Cultural District, which is the larger grant that is more for festivals, preservation, capital projects. And then Arts Create, which is every other year, and this is more geared toward operational support. So the Cultural District, the larger grant opportunity, so, um... So the Cultural District, the larger grant opportunity, so what they are looking for in that application is high-quality art programming, focusing on visitors 50 miles away or more, enhancements to the Cultural District that make it more accessible, attractive, cohesive, signage, wayfinding, promotion, overall promotion of the district with website branding, marketing, any type of organizational support for management, and capital improvements. Tonight, you will also see what the board responsibilities are, and they are responsible for creating the guidelines and standards of this district, helping to improve the community with communication, advising the city or any other departments with opportunities
Having business owners and property owners, but I wouldn't want it to be a burden on us someday where we have to have a majority of the board or something, property owners, because as we have seen with Main Street, that has been challenging sometimes as well. Anyway, I'm really excited because this opportunity will be to start. We have our first grant application January 15th, so that's for $2,000 to $6,000 up to. We will need a matching grant, which we have talked to a community foundation about helping us out with that, because they have a particular fund that is designated for art. And one of the main requirements of our grants is that it ties in in an artful way somehow in our city.
Elaine, go ahead and finish. I just wanted to say something to you specifically about the membership. You might want to consider just a up to 12 and a no less than seven, so you have a little bit of flexibility there, because you're going to have years...
Right.
...where you may never get a quorum, because you've had some people leave and you haven't been able to replace them. So I would consider that.
Yeah, yeah, this year, everybody's curious, and so there was a lot of interest.
Yeah, so it will help in the long run to have some flexibility.
Get that, Mike?
I would also just think of an odd number.
Yes.
That way, you don't have to spend...
Well, technically, we have 11, because I am really kind of, well, I am the chair, so I guess we do have 12. So do I need to tell someone to get off to make it 11, an odd number?
It's up to whatever you all want to do.
Well, that's a good point. I didn't think about that. It grew to 12 before I realized it, because otherwise I would have said, you know...
Well, you're making the appointments tonight officially.
Correct. Well, that's 12 then, so we'll talk, well...
You can live with 12.
I think for this first year, we're going to learn a lot, and that's really what we're doing right now, is just taking advantage of something that was pretty much given to us by the state, this designation. It's going to open up a lot of doors, and like I said, I think the impact of summer camps next year and various things, it's not just an Ingram or Hunt. It's our downtown core businesses and all around that are seeing a change in their business economy right now. So it's a good time to have something like this, and I'm working out the details. Let's see, we are working very closely with the CVB, because we pretty much will be doing something very similar to what they already do. And Julie Davis was at our meeting yesterday. I think she's going to be very helpful with us when it comes to ideas like additional kiosks and things like that. We'll make them look artful, and they will be kiosk, but they'll look artsy. We do have to, any grant we apply for, we do have to have a one-to-one match. The map that you see here may change at some point to include some of our venues that were actually considered when we got approved, like the Calo Theater, things like that. It was just one of those oversights. And the map itself is very hard to read, so we want to try to clean that up, make that clear, and make sure we have it. You can't hear me?
I can't see it.
Can you describe what the different colors are saying, because I can't read.
Okay, so the red line round, that section of land is the downtown core and the Cultural District that went in with the application to the state. And all the others around it were in the tours, and they're called different things. The red, the red line, right. So that is, and they have told us that they're very amenable to changes to that map as long as it's not a complete, a big change, which for obvious reasons. So do you want me to read off the board members, or would you like a copy of the board members? Or...
You want to wait till we get to the appointment?
Okay, that's a great idea. I guess I would like to, I've looked at the resolution except for that one part. I haven't seen any other changes that I would make.
So the changes, the editing would be in the composition of membership?
Uh huh. Correct, and the property ownership.
Removing the property and the business owners, okay.
Changing culture to cultural. Any other edits? Is there a motion then to approve Resolution Number 39-2025?
I'll move to approve Resolution Number 39-2025, the Cultural District bylaws and advisory board members.
Second.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, so vote. It passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 6B.
We do have two citizen speakers signed up.
Let's listen to, let's hear from the city attorney first, and then I'll call those two citizens speakers.
Martin, are you going to put the presentation up? Thank you. Okay, counsel, you've seen some of this information before. I'll talk about the property and the history and ownership of Tyvee Mountain, what's, I think, affectionately known as Tyvee Mountain, and our interests and goals, and the next steps. Property location is on the corner of FM 1341, which is, of course, is Cypress Creek Road and Loop 534. The size, it's really two public tracks. Tyvee Mountain is considered eight acres. It's been reserved over the years as a burial site, and then there's an unimproved road portion that's approximately 2.67 acres. And there's the location, you can see outlined in yellow, both properties, and then this is a little bit closer up. You can see the road kind of snakes up there, and then right in the middle of the yellow is the burial site, and there's an obelisk up there that designates Captain Tyvee's grave, and of course, he's buried there with his sister and his wife, the cat.
And cat.
Sorry, yes, I need to mention the cat. Here is the survey that we recently had done, and this shows the acreage is the 10.67 acres in total. The eight acres is the upper portion, the hill, and then the 2.67 acres is essentially the roadway area that comes off of the road, of Texas Road there. History is fascinating. I think Captain Joseph Tyvee meant so much to this community, was the first mayor, gave the site for the first school here. He was the original owner of this property among a lot of the adjacent property. He married Ella, and they both died without having children, and then, so Susan Tyvee, his sister, inherited the property, and she died, leaving no children as well. Again, she inherited the property from Captain Tyvee. She sold the property, or sold property in this area to Charles Shriners, but reserved the eight acres as a burial ground, and that's in the deed. And her will, after she died, transferred the remaining property to John Mosby, who we really lost track of, although we know he died in Travis County. We know the name of his wife. We don't believe, at least there's no record of children. And so it kind of becomes, what happened to the eight acres? If she had that as part of her estate, did not sell it to Charles Shriners, then arguably it went to him, and then it would go through his estate, but we've lost track of him. And then in 1940, the Tyvee senior class purchased from Richard Flock, Flock, see how I learned how to say that name? Purchased from his estate, much of the property, they thought, but the deed was never filed. And there are pictures of this presumably a deed going between the seller to the buyers, and there was much fanfare about it, but no one has ever found the deed in the records, and we don't believe it exists. So that has become a question mark with respect to the ownership of the property. So we, KCAD, over the years, if you ask them, they have no records on these properties. They have listed as no, there's no ownership. They have not assessed taxes. The county, over the years, says that they have, at some point, they talked about gaining ownership of the property, or clearing up ownership of the property, and they had it surveyed, and they've done some road maintenance. KISD, as you all may know, and the public may know, the senior class each year walks up the mountain as a ritual, as a tradition, and usually when they do that, we know when that's coming, and we maintain the property and do some weed eating and some trash pickup and open the gate. But that's essentially the use, and so we're looking to really expand the use. I mean, we've put a gate up there to cut down on cars going up that Colicci Road to the extent that they could make it up there. We've done some maintenance in and around the cemetery site. Occasionally, there's trash, and so we do go up there and clean up the trash periodically. Obviously, it's got great historical significance to Curville and our founding father, and it would mean, I think it would mean, I don't want to act like I'm speaking for counsel, but I think there would be great value in the city or someone, obviously, protecting it, honoring it, maintaining it in a way that we could open it up to, you know, greater public use. And I don't know what that means, I don't even know what that looks like, but if you walk up there now, you know, you better have some sturdy shoes, and in some ways, it's a real, it's sad, because it's such a nice sight, and it offers just great views of the city valley. And so I think, and you all can talk about this, if we wanted to, you know, clear up ownership and work in ways to promote public use, or greater public use, I think this is, frankly, I believe the only way to do it, because the ownership is so clouded. Next step is to, again, work to engage the owners, if there's any. We've done that, particularly, I should say that the city has looked at this project several times since the late, at least the late 1980s. We've never found any owners. Part of the eminent domain action before you, and let me clarify, by adopting the resolution doesn't mean we're going to go to court tomorrow and file eminent domain proceedings. I want to be real clear with that. We would continue to, you know, try to find out if there's any owners out there. Presumably, this will create some publicity around this issue, and perhaps someone will call, or someone will say, hey, why don't you talk to so-and-so? They're a member of the flock or the Real family, and so maybe we do find someone along those lines. But this would set us on a course to clearing up ownership to include the use of eminent domain at a future date. And it would authorize me, with guidance from you all that you've given, the homework that you've given me to do, to proceed, I would say cautiously. But if, my only reminder to you all, if you're going to adopt the resolution, or there's a motion to do that, you need to use the motion that I'll show you in a second, and we need to take a record vote of your action, and that's all pursuant to state law. So that's what I have before you. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
How long has the city been maintaining that property, cleaning it up and dealing with the trash? How many years?
I don't know. I know since I've been here in 2001, I know that Parks Department has periodically told me that they've done that.
Okay, and we're not, there's no property tax revenue that has been collected from this property, I guess, ever, correct?
I don't know if ever is correct, but certainly in the period of time, I think, and don't quote me on this, but I believe when I asked KCAD for their records, they have notations in the file on these properties, but it goes back like 28 years that they've been periodically asked to look into this issue, and so since at least that time, and probably many, many years before that, you're right.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Hayes?
I just want to clarify, please. If we approve this tonight, that does not mean, we still have work to do, basically. And if we find that, if we inquire about the appraisal value, perhaps was not, you know, was higher than we think it should be, I don't know if that means another appraisal or just looking really closely at the appraisal itself, but, so that's the only, I don't mind going forward with it, but I think I have some caveats, because I think the appraisal value was more. because I think the appraisal value was more than it should have been, number one. And then we have no way to, to have restitution for the expense we've already put out for the last 24 years or more. So, you know, I'm not, I'm not in a hurry to agree to that value that they've given on the appraisal for that very reason, so.
Yes, I, I've heard that and I'll delve into those two issues, yes.
Questions for Mr. Hayes?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
So how did this theoretically get off the tax rolls? Have you had a idea?
I, I have.
And what might it take to get it on the tax rolls?
Well, someone, private concern. Pardon?
I mean, whether we know the owner or not, can, can we not assess taxes against them?
Well, we, we wouldn't be involved in that. That, that would be a KCAD function. That, that's.
Well, but can we not find out about that? I mean, wait, because if we could put it on the tax rolls and the taxes don't get paid, we can go the steps at the courthouse and buy it.
I, I will, I will look at that issue, but, but I think what they'll tell you, and I, I've had conversations with them about this, is they don't know who owns it. There's a presumption that the public owns it, if you will, so it's not, not taxable. And that's been their stance for, for a long period of time.
Okay, so we have other public property? I don't know, what, what's an example of public property?
Well, all the property that we certainly own, all the property that the city.
But they don't assume we own it.
No, they don't, they don't assume anyone owns it, but it is in the public realm, if that, if that makes sense. And it doesn't necessarily make sense because to, to me, it's either, you know, it either is taxed or it's not. Or it should, you know, it's not because it's owned by a public entity or a private entity that's exempt.
And it's, the zone is residential. I'm, I'm really opposed to the proceeding at this point with the appraisal that we have. And the, I mean, I don't, I don't think, I don't think the city needs to be owning this piece of property. I think that efforts should be made to accomplish these things. And if the city can play some role to help some other maybe nonprofit organization or whatever that maybe wants to own it and manage it, and that would be fine. But I personally, I'm not at all in favor of the city spending $230,000 and, and then taking on the responsibilities.
Mike, you helped me out on an issue we had with the Veterans Pathway. And it was a back tax deal. It wasn't very much, but didn't they have to sit on the tax rolls for like three years before anything could go forward with that? And then the, I'm talking about that little triangle of land over off of Tucker or Turner, whatever drive it was, it's over there. It has to be, it has to be on the taxes for a while with delinquent taxes for, and then we have to give due notice. Three years, I think, is the right number. And then you have to go through the process. So I mean, it's, and the other thing too is, nobody owns it. So there's not really anybody to, I mean, we could put it on the tax rolls.
Well, and the city's been researching this since 2018.
Exactly.
You know, I mean, how long are we going to continue to do that?
You know, I agree with Mr. McKinney that maybe some other options might be out there. I don't want to spend a whole bunch of money, the city and the taxpayers' money on this. But on the other hand, too, this has been going on for over 20 years. Looking at this with previous councils and something needs to happen. And like Councilmember Seigerman said, if we do this this evening, we're not saying we're going to spend the money, buy it and do everything, but it also, as you, to your point, it would open up the opportunity for more people to say, I am a family member and I would like this or whatever, correct? Is that right?
Well, I, I wouldn't say by virtue of adopting the resolution it does that. Hopefully, by virtue of having this, this discussion in public, a public meeting, it'll generate some publicity, maybe a news story or two. But, you know, who, who knows? I, I don't know.
So I have one more question. So let's say we did adopt this tonight. What is the next step?
Well, you, you, you mentioned the homework that I have. And so I would delve into those issues and come back with some options on how to move forward and do, do those things.
Okay. So it still has to come back to us again?
Maybe one of the seniors from Tyvee class of 19, whatever, would show up and say, hey, I was there when we signed the deed.
Right.
And I, I should say, over the years, and I think, I think the mayor can speak to this. There's been several, you know, articles in the newspaper about the issues involved with ownership, lack of ownership, lack of public use, who owns it. And so there, there has been, over the years, I mean, yes, someone in night, from 1940 could remember or a parent from whatever could, could do that. I'm dubious about it because, again, over the, over the years, there, it seems like about every five years, the paper does a kind of an expose on this issue about, you know, who's going to take control of that property.
Any other questions for the city attorney? Who's signed up to speak?
George Burdi.
Mr. Burdi.
George Burdi, 1616 Glen Road. So kind of, kind of a couple of questions, but it kind of goes with what he was saying and what I think he was alluding to. But it's not just the cost of buying it, but you, you're taking on the responsibility. And I don't know, I don't remember if the road, the word road was put in quotes, but it really needs to be because it's anything, anything but. So, but it also kind of with what Mr. McKinney was saying, within the last year, catty corner to this property, the city helped clean up that, the one cemetery. But in order to essentially get out of perpetually maintaining it, a nonprofit was set up to do just that. So unless that's really what is going to happen here, I don't see the point of going forward in this fashion because I don't think it's a public interest for the city to be a property owner of a cemetery. I also would encourage, and I know it's been done in the past. The only person that, or only group that really uses it is KISD. So in some way, I would try and get them. And again, I know that's been tried. But barring all of that, I would encourage counsel to seek to find a nonprofit, a creation of a nonprofit. Don't even have to deal with the ownership of it because ownership means somebody's going to kick you off the property that's not in place right now, right? So I don't know, there's a gate with a lock, but who, who charges us with trespassing if we go up there? Is there somebody? I mean.
It's public property.
Is it? I mean, it's not, I mean, we don't.
Yes.
It's not private.
Because I've, I've gone up there, am I, am I trespassing when I go up there?
I mean, it's presumably, I don't think there's any no trespass signs.
Right. And so, so anyways, it's, it's kind of a whole big ball of wax that I don't know that the city should be involved in at this stage. They should be looking, I think, I think it's, it's valid. Everything that's in there talking about, I mean, it's, it's, it's Tyvee, right? So the cemetery, if we can take care of it, I mean, that, that gets said about places, you know, how they take care of their dead and honor them is kind of a sign of how good the community is. So we shouldn't just like abandon the thought, but I don't know that this is the path to solving that, so.
Thank you.
Bill Rector.
Dr. Rector.
Bill Rector, 705 Water Street. As you may know, I have an interest in history. And no council wants to be known for using eminent domain. But I think that this is right and good and needs to be done. This is a historical piece of property for our community. It's a piece of property that people are not able to enjoy and utilize for the last 35, 40 years. It has the opportunity to become a park where people can enjoy a beautiful view, can see the graves of Tyvee. It's something that can be utilized, showing pride in our community. And I think it is right and good to look seriously at doing this. I remember when I hiked up in 1960 to Tyvee Mountain, no one knew who owned it at that time. And we're still in the same situation tonight as we were in 1960. And I applaud you for looking at ways to possibly clear up this and make this useful property for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers?
Yes, sir.
Right. We have a resolution before us. We have, we spent some time in executive session, speaking about things which I can't repeat outside of executive session. There are some hurdles ahead of us. And I'm certainly, I'm certainly open to hearing what the next step would be for this council. On all rushing at once.
Well, I'd, I'd like to make a motion. Is, is, are we just discussing now or is?
We can just, you can make a motion and we can discuss.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion. Based on the conversation we've had and the follow-up that I understand will take place after this, it's better than what we've done for the last 20 something years. I mean, we, I feel like we need to do something. And we can still, I think we still should entertain the ideas that were brought up tonight about a nonprofit and somebody else actually taking ownership of this property other than the city. Because it, someone has to pay for those, you know, people to go out and, you know, take care of it and maintain it and fix the fence if it's, so it's, it's, it's a cost. It's a cost to whoever owns it. But I think for us to do nothing tonight, for all the work you've already put into it, Mike, would be kind of a waste of your time. And I feel like you've done a lot of work on this already. We've gotten this far. Maybe we still have a quarters of a way to go, but I would like to make a motion to approve this.
Okay, the state requires us to make a motion to that as shown on the screen.
I move approval of resolution number 40-2025 to include that the city of Kerrville, Texas, authorized the use of the power of eminent domain to acquire the burial site for the purpose of continuing and further developing a memorial cemetery and public park.
Is there a second?
So does that mean that the city's going to do that? I mean, it doesn't mean we're committing city to develop a memorial cemetery?
That's right, the city of Kerrville authorized the use of the power.
Well.
Before we go into discussion, is there a second? I will second it. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Now we can discuss. Go ahead, please.
That's it. I mean, this is committing us to, to develop a park and memorial cemetery. That's a, that's another step farther than.
Well, somebody has to be able to do something, whether it's turn it over to a nonprofit, something. But, you know, I mean, hearing from Mr. Rector, Mr. Burdi, everybody's got valid points. But, you know, in 1960, if nobody knew who owned that property, the end result is to get it into the hands of a nonprofit.
Which would be my hope.
Yes.
Yeah. Historical organization. We have several of them in Kerrville.
I mean, I think that we can get a decent appraisal based on, I mean, you can't even drive up that mountain in a car. You have to walk it. So it's not, it's not useful land for anything other than the graves that sit up there right now. But I certainly think that people in the community, including myself, would like to go up there and, and visit it.
Yeah, there's.
Said you can call him, he'll take you up there.
Yeah, a tour guide.
I got a key.
There's actually a gap in the fence. All right.
I agree with what Paul's been said. I'm not disagreeing with Mr. McKinney, but we've got to do something like Councilmember Hughes just said as well. And, you know, the main thing I've seen in here is continuing because we have been maintaining that property for, not trying to date you, Dr. Rector, but 65 plus years.
Few people realize that Dr. Rector graduated from Tyvee when he was only 10 years old.
Wonder genius.
Okay, we have motion, second. We've had discussion. Are y'all ready for a vote? Okay, all in favor, so vote.
We have to have a roll call vote, sir.
Oh, you're right, sorry. Thank you.
Councilmember Seigerman? Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Herring?
Yes.
Councilmember McKinney?
No.
Councilmember Hughes?
Yes.
So we still have steps to go. And we will probably visit this several more times. Thank you for your work. All right, the next item is resolution number 40-2025. Mr. Hayes? No, no, I'm sorry. We're, I, I can't seem to follow an agenda tonight. We're at 6C, proposed contract between the city of Kerrville and baseball firm, Mr. Brimhall.
And we, we do have one citizen speaker.
Who's going to start? You're going to start, Mr.?
I am going to start. Mr. Brimhall had been on vacation until yesterday.
Welcome back.
Yes.
Hang back, yes.
Put this on him, first day back. So thank y'all for taking the time. This is about the management of the Kerrville Sports Complex, the baseball and softball side of it. And so as y'all recall, the previous meeting, we selected a group whose name is now kind of in process or finalized. The, the baseball firm finalized with the Secretary of State's office. And so part of the ownership group is here. Mr. Junker and his team are here tonight. We're going to go through a little bit of presentation, go through kind of the changes to the contract. So the structure of it is proposed to be just about the same as the one that we looked at in '22, the amended contract for DBAT. We'll go through changes in term, rent, a couple other substantial items. But by and large, it's not too much, too much of a deviation from that previous one. And so if you don't mind, Mr. Mayor, I will go through that. And then if Mr. Junker, anyone from his team has something they'd like to say, turn it over to them and then move on for questions. Okay, so it is essentially, we haven't had time to type everything up, finalize everything. We're still negotiating some of the deal points. Most of it's tied around insurance and some of the default provisions. Does the language match and make sense, given the, given the changes that we're talking about in the, the rental structures and in the terms? And so Jay and Mr. Junker are going to continue those conversations. But the meat and potatoes of the whole thing, we're ready to kind of talk through. There's too many words and I don't like using this much in these presentations, so I apologize for that. But kind of a side by side comparison, starting with the top, what's the management structure of it? So the previous management structure was BTP Baseball, a franchise of DBAT. And they ran both the indoor and the outdoor facility. So they did the, they did the pitching machines and the coaching and all the rest of it. And then they also ran all the tournaments. The structure that's proposed for, for us to change to is for the baseball firm and Mr. Junker's team to oversee the tournaments and sublease to DBAT Corporate, basically the ownership group of DBAT who started it, which is down in Burnie, for them to manage the indoor portion of it, bring it up to the standard that DBAT has, and they manage that. So Mr. Junker's group, baseball firm, they would oversee the tournaments and the outdoor facilities. And again, DBAT, which it's different than DBAT. It's hard to say it that way, right? So it's just a different management structure, right? That would operate that indoor facility. So that's a big difference because I think it's hard when you're just one entity having to do both. It gets stretched pretty thin trying to, trying to manage all that. So the term for the previous contract, it was renegotiated for an initial three-year term. And, and as y'all know, we didn't extend that past the, the initial term for that. This proposed term for the group coming up is a five-year initial term with two three-year options. The rent on the last one was real hard to kind of wrap my head around. It was past performance, right? So in the previous 12 months, did you have tournaments come through? And if you did, you didn't have to pay any rent next year. That came to a head this year because there was no tournaments and then there was no recourse, right? We, we had three different solicitations, had various conversations about, you know, how, how would a rent structure work, what would make sense? And what's offered by the group here is for year one rent to be a guaranteed dollar amount for nine months, starting in March and going to November. So $2,500 a month, they'll operate it the whole year, but rent coming in those months. Remember, remembering we didn't get rent. rent at all previously. And then in year two, that bumps up to three thousand a month. And year three, uh, for nine months again. And then in year three, it's all, all year for three thousand a month. And then in year four, um, negotiate, because that gives them some time to kind of get their business plan up and running. How is it working? Are everything's going the right way? And at year four gives us the opportunity to kind of renegotiate. Are there, is there some profit sharing? Are there some other mechanisms? Do we have some money that we can pump deeper into CIP for this facility? Because it's a lot of CIP in this facility. Um, this is a big sunken cost and a lot of this. Going further, tournament minimums were four hundred a year for the rent abatement. They assume that because it's so far into this year, uh, they still think they can get three hundred tournaments for this year. But, uh, following that in the second year, have at least four hundred. Three hundred teams. Did I say tournaments? Thank you.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Three hundred tournaments in year one and then only four in year, yeah, I'm sorry.
Thank you, George.
Four hundred teams, right? And, uh, four stay-and-play tournaments. Those were kind of the rules in the previous contract. And so, uh, in year two, we plan, they plan to get to that, uh, four stay-and-plays and at least four hundred tournament teams. Thank you. Words matter. So, and the previous con, contract, the, the DBAT hours, they're kind of different every town you go to. I looked at a bunch of DBAT hours. Um, they'll, we're still working that through and they're still talking that through with the DBAT folks. But they'll be kind of, they'll be standard hours that you would see for a business. So Bernie and DBAT here was ours were two o'clock on Monday through Friday and they started at twelve. I think it's a function of how many people you know are gonna walk through the door and whether it's worth it to keep the lights on starting at noon versus two. So, um, not much different there. And the Kerrville Little League, uh, use of the fields. So in the previous contract, March through June, the Little League was required to give six-week notice for scheduling of the fields. Um, Mr. Junker has been working with, uh, Little League, uh, kind of talking through the schedule for the season. We said that it's vitally important that Kerrville Little League feels embraced by this change and that we make this work. Um, there's a request from the operator to, to exclude Little League games on Fridays when they have tournaments coming up the next day. Lots of trash. It's, it's, it's kind of a complicated dance to get it turned over from a Friday night to a Saturday morning. And our staff isn't there. We're not a weekend crew. We're there Monday through Friday. And then when there's tournaments on the weekend, it is their responsibility. But it's kind of our responsibility to have it ready to go for Saturday morning. And so they're talking through that. Um, and they haven't finalized those discussions. And I think they want to have the Little League out there and practice more out at the fields, if they're willing to do that. And in addition to that, they'd offered that they'd be willing to put some coaching clinics on and some kid clinics on for the, for everybody who's part of the Little League as well. Change here, uh, which is not, it makes sense to me. Um, it's frustrating for me, but it also makes sense to me because I wouldn't want to take on an eight-year-old HVAC or electrical system. Um, and so they have asked that we take that on. Uh, and we said, yes, we can do that. We're gonna need some pretty detailed ma, monthly maintenance records. You know, here's the schedules for filter maintenance. Here's the schedule for running this, doing this, making sure that those things are, are good to go moving forward. And Jay and his team are gonna have, they're gonna be out Thursday to go take a look at the conditions, tomorrow, to go take a look at the conditions of the facility. And then one of the bigger changes is the reporting requirements previously were just vague. They were just kind of generic. It wasn't really in-depth. We didn't ask a lot and they gave what they were asked. And so it really isn't robust enough to get a good understanding. Are people staying in the hotels? Where are they staying? What block of rooms were locked, were, were, were booked? You know, were, were folks, I don't know. There's a million pieces of economic data that we can ask for that they could provide. And a lot of that is in the partnership with CBB. And so, uh, part of those requirements is meeting with CBB monthly in addition to meeting with staff, coming to see you all quarterly or, or annual, I don't know, figure that out quarterly or annually is what they've done previously, uh, to kind of report how things are going and just keep us all abreast of what's happening. Okay, so with that, I can go back to any of those points, but, um, we're, the recommendation from staff is that y'all authorize the city manager to execute and finalize contract between the baseball firm. But again, that's just, that's our recommendation.
I'm gonna ask a few questions now.
Please do.
So I played a lot of softball in my young adult life and even after I was out of high school. And so we played a lot of evening games and tournaments. Sometimes Saturday games weren't over at six, you know, and that if we have a light, we have lighted fields, right? So.
We do.
I don't, I know you're working all these out. I, I don't expect that you'll know if you have a demand for it even yet. But I hope, I'd hope so because that's heads and beds too, because you'll have tournaments that don't end in time. Some, some take buses and go home at midnight, but you might also have some that fundraised enough to have a, a hotel room for the team, hotel room. So that is something I noticed that you're, I didn't see any hint of evening practices or games or anything.
So most of it will be in the evening.
Oh, okay.
And the lights are definitely a part of that. We have it in the contract.
Okay, good.
I, I'll remember to put that in next time because I didn't think about that being substantial, but.
I remember many nights not being, you know, done at six, so.
So during the weekdays, we have it in the contract that the lights would go off at ten and then at eleven on the weekends, unless there's exigent circumstances that require them to keep them on a little later. Uh, just because you don't want the neighbors to get, uh, too angry at the lights being on so late. But there's definitely a lot of night games.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm excited.
Oh, listen to the citizen speaker then next.
Any questions for Mr. Hornis?
The contract, um, from previous operations was pretty inadequate to his purposes, apparently.
As far, yes, sir. I would say as far as, you know, clawbacks for us and, and, you know, like I said, we were paid in arrears.
Right. And that wasn't the only thing. So you've mentioned several things here really about the contract. It was not so good. So, um, and so some things, these things kind of stand out. But is there, do we need to review anymore of that contract to, to, if it was that poorly written in the beginning, are we, do we need to invest a little more effort than to making sure the rest of it? I identified several things.
Well, I think those were, I think those were policy determinations more than anything else. Um, and, um, you know, part of it is who's watching it, you know? Granted that the folks in the previous contract weren't going to meet with the CBB on a monthly basis, but were we checking, right? We needed to be doing that as well and pushing a little harder on that. We took some assumptions that, that acting in, in, acting in the way they ought to be. And, and I think, I think the previous management group was just spread too thin to be able to accommodate all that. But I, I don't, I don't think so, sir, but that's y'all's purview.
It's pretty obvious the contract didn't represent our side of the agreement very well.
Any other questions or comments for Mr. Hornis? Who's our citizen speaker?
George Broody?
Mr. Broody?
And we have, Mr. Junker is here as well from.
Go ahead. I'll listen to Mr. Broody.
Uh, George Broody, sixteen sixteen, Glen Rose. So the first thing is, he's talking about a contract I emailed earlier today. I assume you guys have seen it, but it's not in the con, it's not in the, you haven't? Okay, so I'm a little confused by the action that's supposed to happen tonight. If, I would strongly urge you not to do just, hey, go negotiate and execute something without it coming back here. Um, kind of for the reasons that Mr. McKinney talked about. Um, um, there, the contract that was being used was the second iteration. And when that was being presented at that time, everybody was being told this is, you know, this is good. We're gonna, you know, we're all on board. We're gonna be able to check this out and all that kind of stuff. And so, um, like I said, I would urge you not to be giving direction to just go off and finalize a contract, maybe go off and negotiate one that's coming back. Okay, that's fine. A question about what was shown though, as far as the rent, um, I, I gathered they're supposed to be subleasing to someone to do the building. I know they said DBAT, but it really doesn't matter. The point is, is that rent that's being quoted for the fields and the building and then whatever they can get for rent on the building is free to do? Like, you know what I'm saying? Like you, I guess the high number I saw was three thousand a month. Um, and so that's what they're gonna pay the city. Do they then go charge DBAT whatever they want and theoretically get their rent paid? Or is the DBAT renting of the building also being paid to the city?
The contract is gonna be between the baseball firm and the city. And so they're subletting.
Right.
That to DBAT to run and operate. So the fees that we would get are solely.
Theoretically, they're gonna be installed in a potentially no-rent situation as long as they can get someone to pay rent at the building that's comparable, right?
In addition to.
I mean, as far as, as far as the city's concerned, right?
That's a very basic way of looking at running the whole complex.
Well, it's what it boiled down to in the previous contract. So I'm just getting at what the possibilities are. I'm not saying they have to do that. But the city only cares about the three thousand dollars. What they do with the rest of the.
We care about the tournaments coming through. That's what we care about.
Okay, that's not what I mean.
It costs fifty-five thousand dollars a month to run the sports complex. It's not a.
Correct. So all we're gonna get, all we're gonna get in return for that is three thousand dollars, right?
No, you're gonna get tournament play. You're gonna get people staying in hotels. You're gonna get people.
Directly into the coffers of the government is gonna be the three thousand dollars a month plus any sales tax percent of those people. Right. I said plus those sales taxes. And if you book those numbers, it's not, it's not gonna cover the cost of the expense. It's not gonna be a.
Well, this would have been a conversation for twenty-eighteen prior to the sports complex being created, sir.
What now?
I, that ship's already sailed.
I'm, okay, we're not even talking the same conversation. So I just.
I'm gonna stop answering the questions.
Yeah, because I'm sorry. It's just not, that's not what I was asking. Um, bottom line is, what I was saying is essentially, there isn't a contract in front of you. The public hasn't seen it. This has been a albatross around our neck for a long time. I think it's fair to say the public ought to see it before it's officially signed. We don't have to be involved in negotiation, but we ought to at least be able to look at it. Because this has been fumbled a number of times and to the detriment of our city. Because bottom line is, we're still gonna maintain, the city is still gonna maintain this complex. It's still gonna be six hundred thousand dollars a year, give or take. And all we're gonna get back is a really small amount. That may be all we ever get back. Okay, but let's shoot straight with it. It's just gonna be a lost deal. So anyways, thanks.
Of course.
Okay, at our meeting this morning with Mr. Rice and I, my notes here say exactly, I had asked him this very question. We will see the, uh, prior to execution this contract. So even though that wasn't spoken tonight, I just want you to know, I did ask and I'm sure others have as well. We were gonna look at it before this is a done deal. I'm sure, I, I trust that they will get it in order, but we will have a look at it, so.
Any other citizen speakers?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Junker? And others?
Mayor Herring, council members. I'm John Junker and this is Jeff Quillen. Uh, Nico Gonzalez couldn't be here tonight. He planned on it, uh, had a, they, they were pregnant and their baby was born very prematurely at a pound and a half. So.
Oh, my goodness.
He's dealing with that. But, you know, we're really, uh, looking forward to changing the course of the sports complex. I know it's a, a lot of work and there's a lot of things we need to do. We definitely understand and what we're charged with, with the community aspect of the sports complex, Little League and organizations that use it. We're gonna be working through those. Uh, talked to Sarah Zimmerman. We're gonna meet with the board once we get the agreements wrapped up. Uh, Julie Davis and Aaron, I've got a meeting with them a week from Friday with the CBB and, and really focusing on the things that haven't happened in the past. And, you know, Jeff's got twenty-two years and select baseball experience. Uh, Nico's been here, I, I think under, uh, with the right team, I think Nico will flourish. Wasn't a great situation he was in the past years. And then with partnering with Five Tool, which has a great name in youth baseball, I think there's good things ahead. And, you know, it's been great to work with Mr. Brimhall and Mr. Hornis through this. So we've got a lot of work to do, but we're looking forward to, to changing the course there and, and getting teams out there and changing the economic impact that hasn't been done in the past.
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council, for, you know, letting us speak again and letting us, um, as I spoke to you last time, we've held tournaments out here in the past. It's a beautiful city. People love to come here. It's a community that, that, you know, has a lot to offer. And so I think that, you know, opening it up to the Little League, opening it up and making it part of the community and making people feel like it's part of the community and give back to the community from it. Um, really looking forward to hopefully being able to work inside this community with everybody. Thank you again for being here.
Glad to be here.
Thank you.
So, any questions for, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Did you have something, Jeff?
Not really about the, I don't have a question. It's just, it's been an ongoing deal. Um, knowing the history behind and researching Five Tool after Mr. Junker asked me to have lunch and talk to him about it and, uh, his past experience as the general manager for a minor league team up in Cleburne, it's, the knowledge and the expertise is here. And I have no doubts, this is gonna be amazing for Kerrville and get, get us back to where we need to be. And, you know, I think the first thing that I told Mr. Junker in our meeting was heads in beds, because that hadn't happened. Um, and that's when he said we're gonna have outside tournaments and they're gonna stay and, you know, part of the deal. And thank you for working with Julie over there because that's, uh, that's key. But I applaud y'all and thank y'all for stepping up to take over and help and also work with our Little League because that is huge in Kerrville.
But the resolution is saying that we just authorized the city manager. And Delane's saying we're gonna get it back. So what, what's gonna happen?
So one of the ways that we could do that is we could, you know, basically negotiate the contract. If y'all say, you know, negotiate and execute, we can negotiate the contract. I can BCC, send y'all the, you know, the agreement so y'all can put feedback in on, on what y'all want to do and then we can execute it. Otherwise, it won't be until January thirteenth that this would get executed.
I think we have, uh, I think we have a, a duty to review the contract before execution. I don't think we have to spend a lot of time on it. And I think we can even do that by, by email, but, uh.
As long as, yeah, as long as y'all, it's not all on the same email.
Yeah, we can't, we can't.
Correct. So as an individual one, y'all, y'all can review it and.
And reply. To one person, not to everyone. I was not involved with city government when this all started. And I know it's an opportunity for our community that's just, has not been realized. Y'all are being charged to make that opportunity for Kerrville come true. And I think you both seem to be willing to do that. Uh, what we need from this facility is kids having safe fun, yes, but also revenue. Not rent revenue as much as hotel, hot money, hotel occupancy tax and also, uh, sales tax. This needs to be a reason people come to Kerrville. Our river was the main reason people came to Kerrville. And a lot of people aren't gonna come to the river right now. So we need people to come. And really, y'all are being charged with a big, big carry. So I hope, I hope you understand that and that it's reflected in the contract that's negotiated.
So we got a time, time pressure about getting something signed before the next council meeting?
Is that true?
Um, I mean, technically the contract ends, you know, the current one ends December thirty-first, um, you know, and for the reassurance of them. So I mean, it, it could wait until January thirteenth.
I think my sense that.
I think, my sense that everybody's pretty enthused about who we have as new managers of the, of the facility, I don't think it's a question of, you know, it's just more of a question of approving the, the final product, I think. And even if it took a special meeting that took five minutes or something, we could maybe do that if we had to do it ahead of that time. I mean, I'm just throwing out options.
Yeah, and then if you, you know, help us with, you know, highlighting the most important, I mean, the areas of concern and interest.
Really, everything in the presentation itself is pretty much what we're, you know, looking at. So, when we look at scope of work, you know, that's really the operational side, you know, of it. So, everything that Michael presented this evening is ultimately what, you know, what we're looking at, you know, moving forward, you know, with, we'll call it the high-level things. There might be some small in the, in the weeds details on a few things, but not substantial in nature.
So, how much more is required to finalize the contract?
I mean, we have to put the contract together, which, again, most of the scope of work is gonna be in this, you know, in, in the presentation here, and then whatever, you know, really is negotiated, you know, we can communicate that through, you know, email. So, it's really whatever council feels comfortable with.
I feel comfortable making the motion, you know, negotiate and finalize the contract with the caveat that it's sent to council individually, so we can reply with our responses.
I guess it'd just be upon final review by council.
It can be individual.
Individual.
I have time before the end of the month. I can't travel as often as some
Right, so is there a motion?
I will make the motion to authorize the city manager to finalize and execute an agreement with the baseball firm LP with final approval by council.
That right?
Well, that's gonna, that's gonna create some confusion, because execute means you're finalizing it.
You're done.
You know, you're proving it, two parties are gonna sign it.
To negotiate and finalize an agree, or, an agreement for us to review and approve.
I mean, really, really, here, and, you know, how, how I kinda view this is, is very simple. Y'all trust me to negotiate and, and do it. If y'all say, hey, I wanna review this before executing the contract, and I go and execute the contract that y'all authorized me to do, that's an issue that obviously city council would be able to take up with me. So, y'all are trusting the fact that I can negotiate, and I can go and execute it, but I wanna communicate, you know, effectively with y'all.
Well, Dalton, I trust you emphatically, you know that, I think all the council does, I don't wanna speak on it. But also, as our responsibility, I think that we should see the contract
Oh, great.
And have the opportunity to look at it before it's executed, or finalized, or whatever you wanna call it, however we wanna word it. But I guess I'm kinda
It's hard, it's hard to put into words, actually. I understand what he's saying.
Let's just do it January 13th, and that way we alleviate any confusion, the public can, can get it, and we'll, we'll just do it January 13th. The small two-week gap on it, it's not gonna make that big of a difference.
Does that timeframe work for you, you gentlemen? January 13th? Cause your first tournament's, what, the 15th?
Well, is that gonna affect a tournament, though?
The quicker we can go, the quicker we
I didn't know that.
Here, here's the whole, me dealing with Five Tool, I need to meet with them next Monday, stay quiet. And to do that, I need to be able to say whether this is gonna be a viable option for tournaments, because of the impact that's going on in San Antonio right now. There is a massive opportunity to execute this type of field and be able to present it to a lot of teams that have never seen it, and a lot of teams that would use it. So, I, I will talk to them next Monday in Dripping Springs at 11:30, but I won't be able to tell them that I can guarantee that field until I can tell them the truth.
Until you can, yeah.
So, I, I'll be, I can go to that meeting and, and be as upfront and honest as I can, but I can't tell them that I have